So are we ready, Ryan?
That was me.
Ready when you are.
Want to do roll call? Roll call disorder?
Don't we usually do pledge allegiance first, or is...
I don't know, it says...
Okay.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is also being recorded for future viewing. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Scott Gray. And as a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting for us. The audience is going to be pretty quiet tonight. And if we do happen to get a speaker, then we'll ask them to sign in and state their name. Okay. It doesn't look like we have anyone to do public comments tonight, so we'll go to commission comments. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions to the agenda. We did have a couple of additional handouts that we've distributed to you this evening.
All right, thank you. And commission comments?
I have a few. I have some questions and thoughts. I'm wondering what Harbor Lights is, where their application stands, and what they decided to do for their public art. I know they were thinking about a mural on the big blank side that faces Cliff Avenue. Do you know what they're planning to do?
Yep, their building permit is active right now. They were getting bids on different murals from different muralists currently, so the plan is to move forward with a mural. They are not paying into our mural, our public art funds. They're doing this independently, so it will not need to go through the public art process which should be approved. But my understanding from the owner is that they're planning to do a mural that will incorporate a mermaid and a beach scene.
You know how big it will be?
I want to say 20 feet by 20 feet.
Okay, great, thank you.
As it was on the original plans that were approved, there was a block for that.
Oh, great, great, thank you. And I know I spoke with Ryan about this, but can you give us an update on Orchard Supply?
Yes. So I've been out to the site and talked with the developer there. They are going to be painting an area of the sidewalks as they were required to within the conditional use permit to identify where their outdoor display is allowed to be. That should be occurring, I would say, within the next three weeks, is what they had said, two to three weeks. And so there are things that are out there and not, it's not a defined, it is a defined area in the plans, and what they paint and stripe will match exactly the plans, the area that they're allowed to do their display, and then after that, it'll be easier for them...
Does that actually become compliant?
Well, after that, their employees will know exactly where they're allowed to place things, and hopefully it'll come more into compliance.
And sympathize with that. And what about the back area with the plants? Because, you know, I don't think we, they didn't have that as part of their plan, did they? To put plants out on the side area?
They did not have that in their plans, so...
You know, it looks so good. I wonder if there's any, you know, sympathy at the Planning Commission level to bring that back and allow some of that. You know, it's a really, I think it's an attractive addition to that area, and I would be willing to, you know, think about doing that.
I can let them know.
Or we could maybe just take a little, you know, thought of, if it wouldn't fly here, I hate to bring them back, you know?
Well, if nobody's doing anything about it, I mean, it's just...
Well, I think it's better to make something legal rather than to allow people to do, well, you can do this illegal thing, but you can't do that illegal thing. I mean, that's kind of...
If they came back, we might be able to negotiate with them to clean up the shipping and receiving area a little bit. Because that, the last time I went by, it's still...
Yeah, that's the, you know, the candy and the stick. I don't know if they're going to do that. But yeah, that could be the candy, the carrot, for them to clean up the back area, that we would let them do that, if they would keep the back area clean.
Commissioner Ortiz, the day I was out there, there was no display out on the side. It may be because they knew I was coming.
Yeah.
But, so was it on the side of the building, or on 38?
Right by the nursery opening.
Okay.
And it looks great.
Looks great, okay, so...
It's just huge plant material. And that's what I would think would be the only thing we should allow, or is just, you know, some greenery. It's almost like they've planted that area.
I didn't notice it when I went by the last time. I just noticed the shipping and receiving mess. But I wouldn't be opposed to letting them have plants in that, by the entrance area. It's out of the way, it's not, not going to hurt anything.
But I'm just puzzled a little by the process here, because I mean, I don't think this is a good practice to get into. I think that the staff could go out and say that there seems to be some favorable reaction to this. But, I mean, the idea of sort of encouraging someone to come back in to add something that...
Well, I think you always say, look, if you really want something, you can go and fight for it. I mean, they tell residents that, and they, you know, you, we've done it at the bakery, I think. You know, Gloria, you want it, go ask for it. And all I'm saying is, we could just let them know that we might be open to it.
Okay, I should be doing a follow-up. They're going to call me in the next two weeks for the, looking at the paint. So at that point, I'll take a look and see what I can suggest.
Okay, thank you. I would hate to surprise them if they do come in, though, without telling them. If we're going to start talking about the back area, I don't want to, you know, surprise them at that meeting. Anyway, enough said. The other, the last thing I want to talk about is over-the-counter building permits, and wondering if, if we have any thoughts of adding water use, landscaping, irrigation, to some of the more major remodel permits that don't come to us.
So as the code's written today, there is no requirement to get any kind of permit to replace landscaping, with the exception of multifamily, commercial and industrial, single-family, there's no requirements to do so. It's something we could conceivably look at as we update our code. I think it'll be tricky to set thresholds for when that's triggered, and then obviously administration enforcement, if somebody's doing work in their backyard, you know, how are we going to enforce somebody from doing landscaping? But we could certainly consider it.
When they come in and ask for a permit, they, do they give you the value of the work being done? The estimated value of the work being done?
If we ask them to. So we do that when it's the question of the 80% rule with legal noncompliance, right?
I was just, you know, approached by a concerned citizen who is very concerned about water as well, and it does kind of make sense, given our situation with water these days, that people can do a lot to their home and put in new irrigation and, or put in new landscaping and do it in a not very water-wise way. It'd be a good opportunity for us to be able to, you know, help the situation.
Yeah, it's something we could do. You know, the Water District does impose limitations, and when you can water and the duration, I mean, that's one way to do it, rather than by plant type. But I'm sure there's other jurisdictions in California that have taken a more...
Well, plant type and irrigation, you know, requiring irrigation rather than hand watering. So how would we go about doing that?
Well, I think the first step is if we are interested, we could do some research, see how other agencies in California that have adopted regulations to restrict the types of landscaping you have, what, how they've done it.
I don't necessarily, you know, think we want to go there, because we don't even do that. Are we doing that with residential, with, you know, remodels that come to us, and new building that comes to us? We're not really restricting anything. I'm just saying, use the same rules that apply to not over-the-counter building permits to over-the-counter building permits.
So our current restrictions, the current regulations aren't real tight. I mean, they do encourage the use of Xeric drought-tolerant landscaping, but I don't think there's anything necessarily in there that would prohibit, for example, using a fruit tree that uses a lot of water. So I'd have to review it pretty closely, but I think the standards today are pretty lax, in types of, what types of landscaping to use.
Don't we have a section on landscaping?
We do, and it's in the code, and we'll be looking at it. My recollection is, we didn't propose many changes. We are going to be looking at some more water efficiency standards with our updated green building ordinance, when we bring that forward. But that'll be more on types of fixtures and appliances, things of that nature.
It'd be nice to just get it moved a little bit towards what's... Have you heard things?
Well, I was just going to add that in the landscaping chapter, which is Chapter 1772 of the draft code, it does identify kind of the threshold of applicability for the water-wise landscaping standards, which for a single-family home is, in addition, that increases the floor area by 10% or more. So I might suggest that when this chapter comes to the Planning Commission, that we consider your concerns as part of our review of that chapter.
Good, I'll do it, thank you.
So when we did the general plan, there was like a strong feeling among many that the best approach to these kinds of problems are not more regulations, but education and just generally encouragement. And this is a good example of where I would be more inclined to go in that direction. To let, I mean, there's tremendous compliance in this area with water savings compared to other areas, and I don't think we need to really put a lot more government control onto this as opposed to just helping people contribute in their own way to saving water.
Yeah, I mean, even that I would be satisfied with. If we put something in place that we, you know, some piece of material that's probably already been written, that could be given to everyone that does anything in Capitola.
Like the Green Building Ordinance.
Right.
We already had way more than compliance, but we have to put a bunch of regulations in and do a lot of new plans and costs.
And there may be some money in that Green Ordinance fund to do something like that? I don't know.
Thank you. Okay, I'm done.
You sure?
Yes, all my lists have been...
Don't you have something this week?
I have something, can I bring it up? Can I bring Vision Capitola up? Is that a conflict of interest? All right, well, we are inviting all citizens of Capitola to come to, two workshops, to envision the future of Capitola. The first workshop is this Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00 at Jade Street Park Community Center. Sign-ups to speak are at 6:30. We encourage everyone to come and talk about what they love about living in Capitola, and what they would like to see happen in the next five to 15 years. The meeting following that, the following Wednesday at 7 o'clock, same place, will be to discuss the findings from all the different ways that we've acquired this data, both online and in person at this first meeting. You can go to www.visioncapitola.com and fill out a comment form on the participation page if you're not able to make the meeting. Thank you.
I just had one thing I was curious about. Actually, I read the Friday report that talked about the vacation rentals, which sound pretty encouraging. Can you just give us a quick...
Sure, so since that Friday update was released, I believe that was the week previous, we now, I believe, have compliance with all those folks that were on our initial list that we've contacted. So that's really encouraging, it exceeded my best hopes for it. So the trick will be to see how many, a few months later, wait for us to go away and repose, and we'll keep an eye on it, and, you know, hopefully it doesn't become a big problem again.
So did that include not only bringing the TOT people in the vacation rental overlay into compliance, but also those who were renting outside the district?
Right, so the ones that were within, we told them they need to get a business license, permit their use, start paying their TOT. Those outside, we said, you need to close down and pay back taxes for the last six months for the monies you generated. And to date, everybody's come into compliance, at least temporarily.
Very good, well, that's encouraging, see?
Yeah, it's a lot of work. I got to give Ryan and Joanna and Katie a lot of credit. They put a lot of time into that effort, so...
Very good, well, thanks, it worked out. Okay, so staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
After all that. So next is Item 3, approval of the, no, we don't approve meetings, minutes at the special meeting, do we?
Yes, we can approve the minutes.
We can approve our last minutes?
Yes.
Okay, then I guess we have either...
We did a special meeting.
Oh, for the last special?
That we split the meetings last time, so we're asking for approval of those minutes.
Okay, so do we have any motions or discussion about...
Make a motion to approve. I found one typo, but I gave that to staff earlier. It was a simple typo.
Second.
So we have a motion, second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Passes? Okay, we'll move into Item 4, the public hearing. This is a special meeting for our zoning code update. Since it doesn't look like we have a lot of public participation tonight, we'll just go to a staff report.
Okay, thank you. Tonight we'll be discussing the draft new Capitola zoning code, and we are reviewing this code in the order of the actual draft. So Part 1 was enactment and applicability. We went over that at our first meeting on March 3rd. Part 2 is zoning districts and overlays, which we are currently in that section. This evening, if we get through the items that we anticipate, we'll enter into Part 3 this evening. And then the citywide standards, which apply to all, all districts throughout the city of Capitola. And Part 4 is permits and administration, which explains how each application is processed within the code, and what board or administrative review is required. And then Part 5 is the glossary, and that will be the last portion of our review. I wanted to first go back during our last meeting, when we talked about the mixed-use districts, and we were talking about the land, the development standards within the mixed-use districts. We talked about minimum lot size, the minimum lot width, and minimum lot depth. And during that conversation, we started to discuss the neighborhood mixed-use, or mixed-use neighborhood zone. And as we were identifying numbers to place, I said, you know, let's make a well-informed decision and get some information before we add numbers, so, for the requirements. So within the mixed-use village, as we know, the village is made up of many different-sized lots and many smaller lots. The decision there, the direction, was to take away the minimum parcel area, the minimum parcel width and depth. But for neighborhood mixed-use, there's a little colored packet that was at your seat this evening. And originally, within the draft, we had a 5,000-square-foot minimum tied to the neighborhood mixed-use, also a minimum parcel width of 50 feet and a parcel depth of 100 feet. As we explained, these requirements would only be tied to new development in which there is a subdivision application, so any existing lot is a legal lot of record. The first neighborhood is across the street from us at City Hall. It extends from the trestle up to a little bit beyond Blue Gum. And this is a unique area in which the new code does have an exception to setbacks and such because of the substandard lot depth and width in that area. But in the other areas along Capitola Avenue and Capitola Road, what our findings are from the mapping that we did is that, on average, if there was a parcel width of 40 feet, the majority of the lots would be not found to be substandard. They would fit within that requirement. And then the parcel depth, our suggestion would be 80 feet, in which the majority of parcel lots along Capitola Avenue and Capitola Road would meet that requirement. And that a minimum parcel area would be 3,200 square feet to bring, to keep the, you know, to go with the existing pattern in those areas. Of course, there are larger lots that could be subdivided to those standards. That would be staff's suggestion, after looking at the maps and what is included. The other suggestion would be, we could keep the code as it is today and remove standards for minimum lot size, minimum lot width, and minimum depth. And that would just allow people to come in and further subdivide by adopting the standards of 40 by 80. There would be a minimum standard, so if you had a lot that was, say, 6,400 square feet, it could be divided into two lots, but anything under that could not be subdivided, so... With that, we can discuss this tonight. If you'd like additional time to look at the maps, we could continue this to the next meeting on Thursday night, so you have time to digest.
I'd like to, because I think Commissioner Westman has a lot to say about this, too.
And so basically, what you're saying, though, is that all of these parcels would meet the 3,200, 40, and 80?
Not all of them. The ones across the street definitely would not, but there are some exceptions built in the code for them. But the majority, if you were to look at the averages along Capitola Road and Capitola Avenue, the majority of them would fit in that 40 by 80 lot.
And the exceptions for Blue Gum and River View are found where?
They're the exceptions to the setback standards that are in the development standards for the mixed-use neighborhood.
Are we going to postpone discussion of this, or...
All right, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, I would, I'd give this...
I think Susan, look, I think Susan's got some thoughts on this.
Okay, so we'll postpone till Thursday?
Sure. Okay, so we'll move on, and I'll make sure Susan gets those maps in the meantime. Okay, next, we're going to talk about the commercial and industrial zoning districts. This is Chapter 17.24. And first, we'll discuss the land use regulations. There were no comments on the purpose of the commercial and industrial zoning districts. Would anyone like to comment on that before I move forward? The purpose? Okay, so we'll go into land use regulations?
I do have something on B, 1724010B. And you talk about prime retail locations. Is that, does that have a glossary? I didn't even look, but is that in the glossary? Is it a...
You know, in the, in the edits, we have an edit to take out in prime retail locations.
Okay.
Just so we don't have...
Great, thank you.
That was one edit. Okay, within the land use regulations, looking at the land use table, there was a comment by Commissioner Westman regarding Auto Plaza Drive and the uses of vehicle repair and vehicle sales and rental, that she did not feel that they were appropriate for all of the regional commercial district, and that we should consider an overlay district for the Auto Plaza Drive. Or another way in which to do this would be to add a note to the land use table, so there would be a little, like, note number four next to vehicle repair and vehicle sales and rental that would limit it, that use to Auto Plaza Drive, which I think is a simpler way to get to it, rather than an overlay. So for the purpose of this discussion, we could, option one is to create an overlay district. The second is to add a note, as I suggested. And I guess the third option would be to keep it as it is today, or keep it as it is suggested within the draft code.
And in the draft code today, it simply says what?
That it's a conditional use permit. Within the regional commercial zone.
And it's permitted in the industrial zone?
Yes.
What's wrong with that?
I don't...
If you have, and this is a question that I had for Susan, and maybe we can table this till she's here to respond to it, but in Auto Plaza Road, you have all three of those items. In some of the gas stations, you might have some vehicle repair, and if a vehicle sales, not sales necessarily, big car lot probably isn't appropriate, but if you wanted to have a budget rent a car or something, are we saying that we would not allow that anywhere on 41st Avenue except Auto Plaza? And I don't, I'm not sure we want to do that, but I don't understand why we might, so...
Well, also, if you wanted, if a muffler place came in and wanted to go in on 41st Avenue, that, that would be allowed as well, right? So we just have to kind of...
The vehi, I think her concern was primarily with vehicle sales, possibly, as, to keep those...
Used car lots, kind of thing.
Like used car lots going up and down 41st Avenue.
Well, I think keep in mind, though, too, that the commercial districts extend beyond 41st. So I mean, like, you have a Goodyear place on Capitola Road. Sears has one. So I think from my perspective, I get the car sales. But there might be some low-intensity vehicle repairs, or even small auto rental places that may not be such a bad factor.
Let's see where a car lot, one of those, like, sort of lower-end car lots on 41st.
Like going down Ocean Drive.
Yeah, could not be the direction we want to go.
Right.
But with a conditional use permit, we have ample opportunity to look at it and say yes or no based on a specific application.
Yeah, I can see, Commissioner, I mean, you don't want to encourage people to give it a try if it's...
Yeah, if you know you don't want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a real negative, and that's what that would be. I mean, but the repair, I don't feel that's wrong. I draw a line between those two.
And the rental, I think the rental's another one where we're...
Yeah.
So you're saying repair and rental, maybe, sales, no?
Right, I see those as different, different things. One of them is a sales thing, and the other two are services. You know, and I think bringing services into 41st Avenue is a good, is a part of a healthy mix for us.
So let me ask this, though. So what if Tesla comes and wants to open up?
Yeah, Santana Road.
I was thinking the same thing.
Can we just not tie our hands and use our, because, I mean, that's a whole different concept of sales, which may be something that, you know, five, 10 years catches on, where they have a little showroom?
Pop-up thing, or whatever, right.
And they have great sales lots, or not, not open lots, but in buildings in San Francisco for Tesla, and they're kind of fun to...
Yeah, same as Santana Road.
...be good to have in 41st Avenue.
And we could try to take a finer-grain approach, identify the location, say 41st Avenue, no car sales, or, you know, maybe have a square footage limit to the lot, so that a place that's kind of boutique like Tesla, that doesn't have 100 cars on the lot, might be allowed, but not a big one.
Well, yeah, so like the Tesla examples, they really don't have a sales lot. It's indoors, you know, you go indoors and order, so...
But they do keep their cars in, at least one car in the back parking lot. Maybe at, like, a display car?
Oh, Santana Road. Oh, I didn't see that.
They have a bunch of them back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd hate to see us tie our hands too much to something like that, because that could be a...
Yeah, I was thinking of a used Tesla lot. Someday, there's going to be a Tesla lot. Yep, but they could add.
So are we saying to just change it to vehicle repair and rental for conditional use permit? Conditional use permit and permitted and for sales? Only in the... What is the car zone?
We're saying that, too, the Tesla sample came up.
I would hate to see, I would hate to see us tie our hands right now. And I think if, it seems like through the permit process, we could limit what we're really trying to have in those areas, so I...
We could delay this discussion for a little bit till Susan returns.
We're probably going to have to delay everyone.
Yeah, I hate to delay too much, but...
I think her appointment is at 6:30. I don't think we're expecting her at 6:30.
Yeah, we, we're going to run against a deadline somewhere.
We could do something to the effect that it's limited in terms of a showroom, with limited parking.
I like that idea, yeah.
So that that idea could come in, and then build in a buffer to that, so that you could review.
And also, zoning codes do get changed, you know, they get patchworked over the years. And that's something that if Tesla came in, my guess is, that immediately gets rewritten, and we allow them, the code will allow them to come in. So I don't think in the future we have a problem, you know, we're going to Tesla away.
Now, over something that hasn't happened, that...
Yeah, depending on the location, it's coastal zone, and you're doing LCP amendments, and you're into like a year-long process, make a code change everybody supports, you know?
Yeah, I'd rather leave it as it is and not walk down that path. But why don't, could we leave it as it is and let Susan know that that was our recommendation? If she wants to bring it back for further discussion, then we can bring it back later.
That's good.
Otherwise, we kind of move on.
That's good.
And I think I heard no large used car lots.
That's kind of wrong.
Right.
Or even used car lots, really, I don't think...
Or new or used, yeah.
I'm not a fan of used car lots here, but...
So leave it as it is today, but create a standard for no large...
That would, you'd have to create another option there, if you're going to, I mean...
Yeah. Yeah. Finn's thinking over there, I can see.
Yeah, so I think Commissioner Smith's suggestion was just leave it as it is in the draft for now. No additional restrictions on size or number of vehicles, and then give Commissioner Westman an opportunity to persuade the commission to act differently.
I think that's good.
Is that okay? So we move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Okay, thank you. Next, this is also a discussion item that Commissioner Westman had requested, but currently, drive-through facilities during the issues and options discussion, there was a lot of support for drive-throughs on 41st. Currently, they're not allowed, but within, so for a drive-through right now, it requires a conditional use permit, and it's not allowed within 100 feet of residential. She had requested that we talked about drive-throughs and possibly limit them to the regional commercial, so that would be the area north of Capitola Road. And just wanted to, where this was in the issues and options, I think she wanted to further discuss it and make sure we're in agreement on the changes. So, so the change is that it's not allowed within 100 feet, and it requires a conditional use permit.
Would they still have to do a sound study if, let's say, they were just outside the 100 feet of, so we have that, I know we have that 100-foot mark, but let's look at McDonald's, because this is already, McDonald's wanted to put in, right? At one point, it didn't get through the city council, but I think it has 100 feet there, so would it require a sound study if it met all of these conditions?
Not necessarily. I think if there was a 100-foot buffer, my guess is there wouldn't be a significant noise impact, at least from a sequel perspective, maybe audible clearly. Anecdotally, it was before I was here, but I'd heard that McDonald's, say, was turned down because they wanted to stay where they were, but there was some support if they moved it up to the front of 41st, which seemingly would provide enough buffer.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I know there was talk for a while, putting a drive-through at the old Marie Callender's facility, if they were going to come in with a new restaurant, and it seemed like something people could get behind. But I get the sensitivity with, some of those areas are right up against, was it 42nd Street, to the rear.
Right.
Well, like, putting McDonald's, where it sits today is way too close.
Yeah.
And this would kind of eliminate that.
The 100-foot standard seems very easy to administer to me, and it's, you know, protects the residential uses.
I'm good with it.
There was a lot of discussion of this, and I don't know if anyone here was on the commission, back when the CBS wanted to put to a.
Oh, permit.
Their drive-through.
Description.
Their drive-through, and they did eventually, but it was interesting, because you, there are a lot of diverse views on this, in terms of what the benefits and the harm are to having a drive-through, in terms of vehicles, and vehicles running, and pollution, and it's not so simple. I mean, people were saying that starting up a car two times is worse than idling it for five minutes, and so forth.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so we will keep it as it is. 100-foot buffer.
We're talking about.
Yeah, so it's a conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit.
Which is new, which is new, because now it's not, it's not a permitted use. Correct. Great.
I have a quick question, just on process, because I go crazy with all of the lists that we have. Is that on a list, the drive-throughs, is that on a list anywhere?
It's on the land use table. Oh, with these lists?
With these lists?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, but that's how I, that's how I'm taking my notes.
These were.
Is that the commissioner's discussion one?
I didn't, I don't remember seeing it, the draft changes, I mean, on this.
Yeah.
I know it was in our issues and options paper, and we had a matrix in there that it was included on, but.
Okay, we don't have to look for it. It's part of 13, and I'll add it to specify that it was also for drive-throughs. So within the discussions, number 13, it was more discussion on the permitted use table, the land use table.
Oh, the Auto Plaza, it's on with?
So it's Auto Plaza, and then I'll expand that, so that it also includes the drive-through discussion.
Okay.
And is there also agreement that you don't want to restrict it to regional commercial? So it's not just, right now, within the draft code, it's not limited to regional commercial, the area north of Capitola Road?
Oh, yeah.
Or Bay Avenue.
I would be in favor of limiting it, yeah. Yeah, I would be in favor of limiting it to north of Capitola, regional commercial.
So it's limited to CR?
Right.
CR, so it would not be allowed on Bay Avenue or south of Capitola Road along 41st.
Or to CC, okay.
So for drive-throughs, there will be an added limitation for regional commercial only. We'll take, we'll prohibit it within the CC zone. Okay, this is additional that we've placed on in the slideshow this evening. Within the mall property, there's been a lot of discussion as we've gone through the code, we talked about the transit center regarding parking, it just continues to come up, and within any major redevelopment of the mall site, we think it would be wise to require a specific plan and to add language within the code that, at the time of a submittal for redevelopment, the first step in that would be to submit a specific plan to look at the area holistically, and have a specific plan that looks at circulation patterns, future development. It's really a process that would engage the public and put into draft form what the expectation is for the areas it redevelops, and then it would evolve after the public process to be something that's, it's had a lot of public process upfront, and then an application, the formal application would follow the specific plan.
So then it wouldn't follow the PD plan at all? It would be a separate, independent item?
Yeah, I mean, with, with talk seeding up that there might actually be something happening there on the horizon, I mean, it seems to me that the way that redevelopment would occur would be a specific plan, it's much bigger than a small plan development-type site. I think they'd write their, or propose their own zoning, we'd react to it, and approve it, or modify it, or deny it. But I think that's the way a big project there would probably work.
And that would include an EIR?
Yeah, certainly.
For the, I would totally be in favor of that.
So we talked about a few different ways of handling it, I thought maybe the easiest is just put a note in there that a major redevelopment project, which I think probably would be difficult to define, but we'd know it when we'd see it, needs a specific plan.
So this was my thought, too, when I was reading the new plan development zoning ordinance, because this applies to the mall. I mean, it almost sounds like it applies mostly to the mall.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I always.
Yeah, now, so now we've got another, maybe when we get to this, but this makes a lot of sense to me. Plan development ordinance makes less sense to me.
And one of the things that's different about a specific plan is it's seeped in state law. There's very specific requirements for a specific plan. You look at infrastructure, services, facilities, transportation, it's a more, much more detailed analysis that's required of a big project like that. And they work well.
Yeah, and I think this process allows for more public input than if it's just something that we already put in the code, so.
But a lot of the incentives and things for that specific plan would follow what you've put into the plan development language, right?
Yeah, there's, there's no requirement in state law that they provide a community develop, or a community benefit unless they did something like a development agreement, asking for the city to give them something more than we ordinarily would, which very well could be the case for a project of that scale. But, you know, yes, I think it would be something that would be rolled into that same package.
So I guess I, I just want to make sure I understand this. If they came in with a specific plan, does that mean that it basically, this is their development plan, and it's outside of all of the other zoning codes, so far and height and everything else, it's all outside, and we have to figure out if we like it?
That's right, it's customized zoning for a specific defined area.
So we only have one mall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we had 20 malls, we're Los Angeles, and then we have a set of rules, and all the different malls have to fit somewhere within those rules. In this case, we can just make up, I mean, we just have, like, a special spot zoning for malls, just one, and deal with it as it comes, based on what makes sense.
But that means there are no real guidelines for far and height, or anything else for, to use as a guide when you're reviewing it?
We have guidelines, I think, I think we have guidelines, it may go outside of those, or.
We have our general plan, you know, we did talk about future mall redevelopment, creating possibly an internal street, and, you know, taking the roof off, and being a little bit more of a pedestrian-friendly shopping experience. So there are some guidelines there. Floor ratio requirements in the general plan would still apply. Anything in a specific plan does not trump a general plan, and implements it.
Okay.
I think with this approach, the rules that currently apply for the CR zoning district would continue to apply for the, to the mall property until the point that the mall submits and the city approves a specific plan that would modify those standards and regulations for that property. So there will be something in place if there's smaller projects that are proposed for that site, or changes in use, but if a major redevelopment is proposed by the mall owner, then the specific plan would be considered by the city at that time.
Okay, so I'm hearing support for adding a note to require a specific plan for redevelopment at the mall. Next, we're going to talk about the commercial industrial zoning districts, the development standards, and this is not one of the discussion items on your list, but I wanted to just revisit this, we had talked about it during the March 3 meeting, and just clarify the new development standards within this zone. For the community commercial and regional commercial, there's floor ratio standards of one for community commercial and 1.5 for the regional commercial. The height standard has stayed the same at 40 feet for both. There's also an added, following with the general plan, there's an allowance to increase the floor ratio in specific areas that can go up to two, and it has to comply with the standards that were in the general plan. Also, the, an increase in height up to 50 feet. Previously, in the code, there was an allowance for increase of height, there was never a max tied to that, so there's the max of 50. And in order to do so, there are several requirements. Planning commission would make a recommendation on a project, it would ultimately be the city council that has to approve a project. There is a requirement of a community benefit, and we'll be talking more about community benefits this evening. And then there's a finding that relates to the community benefits, there are several findings that have to be made in support of the community benefit in order for this increased floor ratio and height. So I just wanted to bring that up, because it is a change within the code, although it wasn't requested as a discussion item. Any comment on that?
I think, since it was in the general plan, we've done a lot of talking about it, I think that's probably why you didn't see it.
Yeah, okay, and tonight, we'll talk about the benefits again, so. Next is visitor-serving zoning district.
Katie, can we go back just a second?
Yes.
Did we ever define light industrial versus manufacturing? It was one of the, one of the items, we just need to define it.
Is that on our list of edits?
It was, now I've completely lost my place.
Okay, let me go there, make sure it's on the list, and if it is, we will definitely be defining it.
Okay.
I had one more that I had a question, I just remembered, I got two more notes.
Yes, we have number 19 on the edits is that we need to define custom manufacturing versus light manufacturing.
Yes, okay.
So we'll make sure that happens. Chair Welch?
So under, on 1724, the Table 1, this is on page 243, it talks about the recycling collection facilities, and it, and when that, I guess refers to 1796-130, to talk about the recycle, but they allow that in the, it looks like in the park open spaces, and we had this come up when we were looking at the skateboard, skate park and dog park facility on McGregor, and we were approving that in there, and, I don't know, I'm kind of having some second thoughts about whether we should allow those recycling areas in those park open space areas, because it seems to me that the, how do I put, well, I don't think they bring in the people that would, we'd want to see hanging around the parks with our kids, that's, it's just, it's just an area that I think maybe I overlooked, and I don't know how we look at that now, but it looks like it's permitted use, and we did approve it, I think, for that skateboard park on, dog park on McGregor. Does anybody else remember that?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
I think that's a good point.
So if we could just remove that from the parks and open space areas, then I wouldn't have an issue with it.
Do you find a 1776-130 in your?
It's 1796-130.
Oh, it's a typo.
Yeah, it's a typo.
Commissioner Welch, can you restate the use that was listed in the land use table?
Under, well, it's a recycling collection facility, and it's under, it says CC, CR, and industrial, but when you go to the 1796-130, recycle, it seems like it also allowed it for parks and open spaces.
So I got the table projected up here from the code, and the way I read it, it's not an allowed use in parks or open space, but a conditional use in the community facility zone.
Okay, good, I don't know how I came up with that, somehow I have all these themes highlighted in big notes there, but, good, well, thank you, Commissioner. And so, we would not allow that in that park once it gets put in, is that true?
If it was part of the permit, we'd say it's grandfathered in. You know, if it was something we permitted previously, and the new code was adopted after that approval, it would be permitted.
So how would we prevent this new McGregor Park from having a recycle center?
I think we'd have to review the permit.
Okay.
Bring ourselves before the planning commission.
Okay. All right, something to work on, then, which is a concern.
Just a little more on that comment. On the table, it states, just to see the, see that other chapter, we probably should add what type of permit is required within the table, so if it's a conditional use permit for the community commercial, or regional commercial, or industrial, so we can add that there is a requirement for a conditional use permit, and then put the reference to the right column. Okay. We'll add a requirement for a conditional use permit, and then have the reference in the right-hand column.
In the meantime, I'll look into the McGregor thing and see what the status of that is, if it's still planned, and we can let you know, and if there's concerns, we'll bring it up.
There might not even be someone, you know, wanting to put one there, hopefully.
Yeah, it seemed like I read that open space in the definition, but, okay, we'll move on.
So next, we'll talk about the visitor-serving zone. Within the visitor-serving zone, there were a few minor edits, including, one was regarding how many days there can be a festival, and originally, we changed that to two to accommodate the car show, but it was also mentioned the Begonia Festival is three days, so the suggestion to change it to three days. Commissioner Smith called today with that, so.
Which I would say are all good comments, and we're happy to put in the proposal and float it by the Coastal Commission. I'm not sure they're going to be receptive, though. For some reason, in that period of time, it's kind of a standard condition of theirs, and only, festivals can only go two days, or events. I'm not sure why, but.
The Begonia Festival's in its, what, 64th year?
So I think, the Begonia, I think, is grandfathered in, it predates the coastal act, the car show, I don't think it is, so, I don't know, it's been going on since the 70s, but it's something we'll talk to coastal staff about, we're happy to make that change, and see if they'll accept it.
I guess if we don't make the change and note that the Begonia Festival is, you know, grandfathered in, because if we, management changes and stuff, if all of a sudden they say, oh, we can't do this, that would be devastating.
So does it affect all of the visitor-serving areas, or?
Everything in the coastal zone. Everything in the coastal zone.
Can I ask a question about the coastal zone real quick? I don't want to get us too off track, but when I look at the map that we have, and I struggle to follow the, it looks like the coastal map, the, and maybe it's just the way I'm looking at this, like the overlay zone goes in along the Bay and through Nova and through the mobile home parks and everything else, is that, am I misreading that? You know how we have outlined the coastal overlay zone on the map? Does that, so does it actually come that far into Capitola, all the way into 38th Avenue at Bromer and?
Goes near King's Plaza.
It looks correct to me, we'll verify it. You know, the map that we have is really old, and I'm not sure what the basis was for setting those lines, but it looks generally consistent.
So there's, it's not like a, you know, so many yards or feet from the?
Yeah, I believe it's within 300 feet of the first public two-way road from the coast, and then there's also a buffer limit with wetlands, so SoCal Creek and some of the other areas that take jurisdiction over.
That seems like it's pretty, okay.
And that's one of the reasons, like Cliffwood Heights is in the coastal zone rather than the starting line being DuBo Hill, because those aren't public roads that have two-way access, so they, they take them.
Are they considered the first?
I believe so.
But Bromer seems, so you have East Cliff and Portola, right, or Opel Cliffs, is Opel Cliffs considered? Maybe not. But it seems a long way, it doesn't lead me to be in that coastal zone, but...
So there's an appealable zone, and then there's the coastal zone. So the coastal zone is set a lot further back, and within the appealable zone, that's where decisions can be made that are appealed to the coastal commission.
Okay.
Which is much closer.
So another process question, the items that are on the edits list that we're not discussing, are you guys going to fill out the implementation and tell us what you do, or can we assume that those edits are just going to be made?
We'll fill this out, but you can assume that they will be made. So there's an issue with the, one of the tables in the visitors' serving that will be fixed, the headings are not correct.
Yeah.
And then the days of the festival.
So following up on this one-day event per year comment, I just want to make sure I'm clear, what, if anything, we're changing.
What section is that?
It's table 1728-1 in section 3A. At the end of that table, there's a note.
Okay.
Note 11.
Okay.
The suggestion was to change it to two days, right?
Yes. Okay, so we'll change that to two days.
And just to correct myself, Mr. Chairman, from the information I just gave, I pulled up the coastal act, and the limits of the jurisdiction includes all offshore islands and extending inland generally 1,000 yards from the mean high tide line of the sea. So 1,000 yards, 3,000 feet roughly.
Okay. It's a long ways.
It's always seemed like a long ways to me.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Susan.
Sorry, yes, my serving.
All right. We're on visitor-serving, 1728.
Okay, I think I'll take this opportunity, though, to go back to the automobile discussion, since we have Commissioner Westman here. So discussion number 13 was for Auto Plaza, the suggestion of creating an overlay district for Auto Plaza Drive. We just went over this discussion, and there are two ways in which to do this, to limit the appropriate uses. The uses that we had listed were vehicle repair, vehicle sales, and rentals. There could be, we could create an overlay district. The second approach should be to add a note that would limit those uses. Within the land use table, there'd be a note at the bottom that would say, limited, this use is limited to Auto Plaza Drive only. In the discussion with the planning commission this evening, we started to talk about, well, what about these smaller Tesla-like developments for a commercial retail frontage? Is that something we'd really want to limit within the 41st corridor where a used car lot is something that we probably would not want to see in the future? So as the discussion evolved, there was direction towards keeping the code as it is today, with the allowance to, you know, we'd look at a conditional use permit if an auto, if a vehicle repair or rental company were to come in. There was some concern for the vehicle sales, as I stated, for a, for a big auto lot to come in, but under the conditional use permit, I think there was, there was direction to keep it more flexible than more restricted, so, but I think we'd like to hear your perspective on that.
Well, I think, I think I've sort of felt strongly about it, because in my years in working in Capitola, there were a number of people who tried to put used car lots on 41st Avenue. I mean, it was one of the, you know, more active kinds of requests that people would make, and it was fairly simple from a staff perspective, you know, to be able to say that used car lots are not allowed in that section of 41st Avenue, and I think you're really only talking about from Capitola Road to the freeway, that portion of 41st Avenue, you know, in the new zoning ordinance. So I wanted to see us continue, I think if you go to Scotts Valley, like on Scotts Valley Drive, sort of their main street, you'll find that there are a number of auto body repair places, sort of used car lots. So I wanted to restrict them more to where the Auto Plaza is, because I really didn't think it was an appropriate use, particularly if you're talking about redoing that section of 41st Avenue to be more pedestrian-friendly. You know, having some, some latitude in there is, is fine, you know, and obviously...
Do you think a conditional use permit requirement is not sufficient to control that?
Well, I would like to see us say that, you know, there's some special findings are needed, that, you know, that auto repair place or whatever is, you know, going to, you know, be compatible, contribute to, you know, that commercial section of 41st Avenue. But that was just my, my personal feeling. So if you guys have decided to leave it in with a conditional use permit, I mean, that's fine.
I think we all agree with your general drift, just how much to tie our hands at this point, not knowing what the future may bring in terms of how, how that industry changes. I know we don't want to see, you know, the Ocean Street kind of, there with flags all over the place.
But if you, like, if you go through Newport, I mean, Tesla was one thing, because, you know, Santana Row, you go inside the building, and they have a car on display, and you could pick your colors and stuff, but like, I think it's down on Newport Beach in that area, McLaren, Aston Martin, Aston Martin, some of those, they don't have, like, display car lots out, it's, you know, it's all that, it's kind of like a Tesla more for you, they're really high-end.
Like Van Ness in San Francisco.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little...
They're all inside.
Yeah, it's more of a high-end, it's not, but we all agree, I think we don't want body shops up and down, or used car lots, a little used car lots on the...
So maybe we should have something in there that says, you know, we will consider them if the majority of the display is indoors, or something along that line.
Because we also talked about, I mean, there's the Tesla from the sales perspective, then there's Sears that does repair in the CC zone, and the tire place, and there might be some appropriate use that we can't think of.
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's, I mean, it's not one I need to die over.
We're going to make sure you get this whole, through this whole process without dying.
Okay, and the, the next conversation we have was for the drive-through facilities, and within this, we're going to limit to the regional commercial, so, but otherwise, keep as is. We're also going to add for the mall property, a requirement for any major redevelopment to have a specific plan, come in with a specific plan, so that's also something that we added to the agenda, to the presentation this evening.
So do you want to require them to do a specific plan, or would you be comfortable with a development agreement?
Yeah, I suppose you could do a development agreement, but I think it would look like a specific plan by the time it was done. You know, I don't think they're going to be able to work within our existing zoning code if they were going to do a major project. It seems like there are some advantages to a specific plan, you know, it's in state law, the various infrastructure findings you need to make, extended public review. There's probably more than one way to skin that cat, but it'd seem like kind of a common approach to doing it.
That's fine. Are you going to have them do a specific plan and a development agreement?
I think that would depend on if they want something from the city, with a development agreement, you know, if they wanted us to give something, you know, some kind of extra development right, and they're going to provide a community benefit for it, potentially.
That's optional, part of the development.
Right.
I don't think anybody requires a development.
Right.
That's fine.
And we went over the development standards within the CC and CR, just a review of the incentive for increased floor area ratio and height, just as a reminder of what's been incorporated into the code from the general plan. And visitors' serving is where we have left off, there are minor edits within visitors' serving, we were looking at the, there's a footnote after the land use table for festivals are limited to one day, the suggestion was to change that to two, understanding that the Begonia Festival, which has been going on forever, is longer, but...
Part in mine is longer.
The suggestion is to put it at two, is a number that we think the coastal commission could work with.
So I've been trying to follow this discussion, and
Yep.
The table, what's, I was looking on the table, and on the second page of the table at the top, it's got the VS subzones, it said VS general, VS general, VS general, VS general.
Yep, that's one of our edits.
Oh, okay, well, I wish you'd told.
So, yeah, the top of the table did not carry on to the next page, so that will be edited. But it's note 11 that will be changed to.
The same as the other page, it's supposed to be.
We may have already discussed this also, but under that same table on 28-1, 1721, under commercial uses, and for Shadowbrook, it has a note four, that it says it can't be within 200 feet of residential property. I don't know if that, seems to me, we approved that one lot right next door to it.
It's closer than 200 feet to me. So note number four
Under...
Is for visitor-serving general.
For visitor-serving Shadowbrook.
Yeah, Shadowbrook, yep.
Just seems like it's closer than 200 feet already.
Yeah, it shouldn't apply to Shadowbrook.
It's an existing outdated standard that I think it's right, we got to change that. That's how it's written today.
Okay. Any other items to be added to the visitors' serving while we're on this chapter, that it was just minor?
I had another edit you may have already have on page 28-6, under lighting, E-lighting, it says in section 1796-100, but it should be 1796-110.
Okay, we'll make that. Any others? Okay, moving along. Next is the special purpose zoning districts, 17.32. Within the special zoning districts, there were a couple minor edits that are listed on the minor edit list, but other than that, no discussion was requested, so with that, I'll ask you if you'd like to discuss anything.
I just had one question, under 1732-020, item D, in parks open standards, open space standards, number one, it says, the following is terms of play use, and that's some misreading this, any structure, land use or removal, but does that mean that no bathroom, that we, what's the term structure, should we not put a bathroom in the parks, or am I misreading this?
Public open space parks.
I don't think so, I mean, unless you made the opinion the bathrooms in a park is not a consistent use.
No, I think, yeah, okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't saying they couldn't be, because it says, the zoning district is prohibited.
But if the commission finds it's inconsistent with the purpose.
Okay, there's a, that's a clarifier, thank you.
We could add something that if it's not a feature that's customarily associated with a park or something.
No, no, I just want to make sure we could have bathrooms, or that's all, I was, I was missing that little clarifier, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other edits, we'll move on.
Oh, I had one more.
Sure.
Wireless telecommunications in the parks, is that something that we want to leave open, or? It's on the, it's on page 32-2.
Why would you not?
What's that?
Why would you not want to allow a?
Why would you not want towers, wireless towers in parks, I don't...
So for that one...
If there's any place I wouldn't want them, that would be the only place I'd be concerned about them, but...
For that standard, it, it directs you to the citywide standard, and then within the citywide standard, which is found on page, if you go to page 104-10, it talks about non-preferred locations, so one of the listed non-preferred locations, it's under, on page 104-10, if you go to C6D, it says parks in open space.
Right.
So it requires a 500-foot buffer from parks in open space.
Well, that's, and I guess that's why I'm asking why, so it would, it would just, it just defers to that, defaults to that policy, instead of saying, just putting a dash through the parks in open space, you have to go look up there to find out that, okay.
The city really doesn't want to outright prohibit it in any way
Right.
Any location because of legal implications, the alternative is identifying it as a less preferred location.
Right, no, and I saw that, and I just wonder why we just didn't put a hyphen mark there like we did the others, but that's fine.
Any others? So now we'll move on to plan development. Within plan development, there were a couple of discussions requested. First discussion item was where plan developments are allowed, and the second item was to discuss the substantial public benefits. So first, we'll talk about where they're allowed, and a little bit of the history on this one. So in the draft ordinance, the plan developments are allowed on any property in Capitola except those designated as a single-family residential. There, the minimum acreage was removed from the standard, right now, there's a minimum acreage requirement. During the issues and options update, the planning commission requested that we remove plan developments altogether from the code. When we went before the city council, the direction was to keep them in, but let's remove, not allow these to occur within the single-family residential neighborhood. So that is what you're seeing, is the city council direction for plan developments, and what was the direction that was provided, so we can discuss this item if you'd like.
About the city council issue, is that?
I'm disappointed that the city council brought this back. I'm disappointed that the city council brought this back. It's their job, I guess. So we have to, I don't know what we do about the mall, because that's the one that it seems most applicable to, but we're going to have a different system for the mall. So should we say not allow in single-family residential districts or regional mall? So that they are directed to the specific plan procedure instead?
I guess I wouldn't say for the mall site, because I could imagine if a big redevelopment project there didn't happen, maybe there's some medium-sized project that comes in with, you know, the bank site or something.
So they can be confused when they hire their architect and their team and they start trying to read our ordinance, they can figure out which option to take. So the procedure that we have here is, to me, somewhat unique in that there's kind of a whole bunch of steps to bring to the planning commission and to the city council a preliminary concept. And they're going to go through a lot of work and when that's finally done, it's not clear that they have any vested rights at that point. Like a tentative map is the analogy that most developers are going to think. This is like getting a tentative map. Once I get approval, all I have to do is meet the conditions and I'm guaranteed, so I can, you know, sell it to somebody else and they know they've got a project.
Right.
And instead, this is sort of, I mean, it's not clear that that's the result here. They're not, you know, kind of inviting confusion and/or trouble with this process, I think.
You know, when I first came here and saw the kind of two-step process we had with plan development seemed weird to me, too. After going through a couple of them and seeing them, I can kind of see it both sides. On one hand, it does give the developer some preliminary indication before they completely invest a lot of money as to whether a project could be approved. It's not a guarantee, as you point out, but if there is some political support for it. But it takes longer and I could certainly make a case for a streamlined process where they just drop off the plans and we process and go to hearing.
Let's say the city council changes.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Now they got a different city council and they've gotten all this preliminary approval and they spent all their time and their money and they closed escrow and then they come to the new city council and they say, you know, we don't really like this project at all.
Yeah, it's very possible.
And it's a little difficult, I think, for the planning commission, for them to go to the council and the council sort of approves a concept and a plan and then you bring it back to the planning commission and we're supposed to evaluate it and, you know, say, we don't really agree with everything that's in the preliminary plan. My concern about the plan development is that, you know, basically it's a way for someone to get around the regulations in the zoning district that they are. And it always made sense to me if you were talking about something like Capitola Knowles, you know, that was a plan development. And that made sense on bigger projects to say, okay, we've got a specific site here, we're going to look at it and, you know, the regular rules don't apply, we're going to do a plan development on this site. And with that plan development, you're basically rezoning the property, so there is zoning that is just to that particular location. If someone comes in and they want to do a building, you know, across the street from City Hall on, you know, Capitola Avenue or, you know, somewhere on Capitola Road and we're going to say that that particular lot is so special or what they're proposing to do on it is so needed that we're going to abandon what our regulations are and let them do it as a plan development, it doesn't make sense to me on those little smaller pieces. It's like we need to come to an agreement about what we want the zoning to be on Capitola Avenue or Capitola Road rather than try and, you know, get around it by doing these little plan development projects, which then, over the years, become a problem because it's spot-zoned. That lot is different. The requirements on that lot are different than any other lot along that corridor. So if you're going to have no standards for size, then I start to have problems with the process.
A four-acre size that we had in the old code basically doesn't exist anywhere. So do you have a size in your mind that would be a replacement for such a?
You know, it could be as small for me as like, you know, an acre. It could, you know, maybe even be a little smaller than that, but I don't think it should be, you know, just sort of a standard individual lot. I don't get why we're making this big exception for standard individual lots.
I think we, we're both in our old school and this, I mean, we, this evolved from like Mission Viejo.
Right.
As a plan development.
Right.
You know, they've got tons of houses here and there and shopping centers and da-da-da and it's all done in this great big plan.
Right.
That's where this concept in our minds still sits, I guess. And it's coming forward now in a completely different sense, which is basically for any old lot, just get rid of the zoning code and come in and we'll see what you have.
Yeah. I'll also add that when we brought it to council, we brought up other ideas such as tying it to a 10 residential unit minimum or say a 20,000 square foot commercial development minimum, so tying it to actual what the project would be and what the outcome. And so they looked at that as well as different ways to measure what qualifies for a PD to make sure it is more substantial than just a single lot as within your example, but this is the direction that we landed on. So that is another approach, though, is to take what is the development outcome and say that a PD only applies when there's more than 10 residential units or 20 residential units or greater than so many square feet of commercial, especially in a city like Capitola where the lots are very small in certain areas.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think of places and I could see on, you know, Capitola Avenue, past where Gales is, where, you know, the liquor store used to be, sort of that shopping center in there, somebody coming in and tearing that down and doing, you know, a plan development on that size. But I would say that that parcel's somewhere close to an acre, if not more than an acre. So.
How big was the 38th Avenue parcel, do you remember?
Less than an acre.
Less than an acre, I think. But it was.
Three quarters?
It still couldn't make sense to do a special project there.
Well, you know, I. So for me, for that one, it's because it met intent of the general plan. And so, you know, if maybe it was tied back to somehow, that 38th Avenue project for me was, you know, we talked about higher density housing next to transportation corridors and shopping for seniors and stuff. So to me, it made sense, but I don't see that, you know, I don't know if you can do that. But I kind of advocated it, I just, my whole thoughts, because the city council wants it, they must have their reasoning. I don't know what we can put in there that's really going to make it.
And this is the one where we're really kind of, their thinking and our thinking just were different.
Exactly.
So we don't know what they, you know, it's hard for us to implement what we didn't want.
So the, so the plan development, everybody keeps bringing up the plan development on 38th Avenue. You know, sort of with the new zoning ordinance, you would be able to do what they wanted to do on 38th Avenue without it being a plan development. It's just that we didn't have a new zoning ordinance at that time, so that was the way they went around it. And, you know, I.
But how do you convince the council of that?
Yeah.
Well, I think.
About going back and forth.
I think the one thing that keeps coming up in discussions about a PD is it's a, if you have the right project that comes for the right location, you want to be able to find a way to bring it to Capitola. And you can't imagine all of the things that that is, and I think the plan development is that part of the code that says, well, here's all the benefits that we need to have and here's some size that we would consider doing it, but there's got to be some way to get through the process. I think that's.
Perhaps it should be, the plan development needs to be larger, you know, than the average lots in the, I mean, I'm just.
Let's say I have a lot that's just not quite large enough to be split into two.
Right.
So now I come in on a plan development.
Not if you're a single family.
No, but.
Yeah.
But it'd still be subject to density requirements in the general plan. Can't override that. But, I mean, I hear the discussion. I think you're making some really good points. I don't think we would want it to be abused, but from my perspective, a lot of times they are good tools. When, you know, if somebody comes in, it doesn't fit the code, even if you go through a rezone and if there's not a zone that would fit a project, what do you do? You know, do you create a new zone for one property? So it is a tool for the right project, but I understand the abuse concerns.
I think the way we should approach this is, since the council wants us to put this into effect, is that we have a large, a size, minimum size for non-single-family residential parcels to which it applies.
Because when I was reading it, I was thinking of different places that it could apply and I was thinking the mall would be, I mean, it's like it was written for the mall.
Right, but the mall's going to, I mean, the mall's always going to be separate. Any of the bigger, you know, shopping centers, they're not going to, you know, go along with the zoning. They're going to be done by a specific plan. They're going to be done by, you know, I mean, there are other mechanisms for doing that.
There are additional findings that are required now with the PD and there's also the substantial benefit will be much better defined. So I think the process in itself, when an application does come in, you know, it's, if someone were to come to the counter and start talking about the very small lot and an improvement and we wouldn't probably direct, we definitely would not direct them down the avenue of a plan development for a smaller project. So it really is, once they can start giving public benefits, it typically, you know, it de facto goes back to a larger development project that most likely is on a larger lot, but if that's standard.
Half acre minimum works for me.
Half acre minimum?
I had a couple of questions about some of the benefits. G7, new or expanded business that increase the supply of jobs available to Capitola residents of all income levels. What the heck does that mean?
So the next discussion item is substantial public benefits and the new.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, so we'll jump into that. And in the additional items that I handed out this evening, one is a redlined version of the section of code, because we had during our conversation, during the meeting on March 3rd, there was talk about the community benefits section of the code that really relates to this section as well. So one thing that was brought up during that meeting is we really need to define better what a substantial public benefit is. So, and stress that it's something that goes beyond the existing code or is not required within our code. So one edit would be a change to that definition to emphasize that it's not otherwise required by the zoning code or other provision of the local, state, or federal law and that it significantly advances the goals of the general plan or the project feature that substantially exceeds the city's minimum standards. Within that, I also handed out a table that, let's see, this table here. And within that, we tried to, well, first is the substantial benefits calculation. We had a long conversation, well, how do you calculate that? And one thing that we needed to clarify is that it's not just one substantial benefit. It can be one, but it can be one or more. So it's not just picking one item on the list and including it in a project. So to define what the, how this would be calculated, it's a project must include one or more substantial public benefits to be rezoned as a plan development is required. The public benefit provided shall be of sufficient value as determined by the planning commission to justify a deviation from the standards of the zoning district that currently applies to the property. So it's the planning commission looking at it and ensuring that there's enough of a public benefit. Next, there was feedback that within the proposed substantial benefit list, that they weren't defined clear enough for an applicant when they came in or for the planning commission during review. And so within this list that was put together, we've, and within the draft update, the areas that are underlined, so in the yellow column to the right of the first column for substantial public benefits for this chapter, I've also included the 17.8 edits that we would suggest for future when we get there. But the underlines are the new areas to better define each of those substantial benefits and to emphasize that they must go beyond the existing code standards and provide some suggestions towards what they could be, but also ensuring that this is open to any, you know, them also bringing forth ideas. And any additions to that?
Yeah, I personally liked the additions that you did.
Me, too.
I think the changes are good, but I like to know how, as planners, what do you think about this whole chapter here? I mean, as a working tool.
I think it's a big improvement over what we have today, which is just like the word substantial benefit and it's not defined whatsoever and it makes it a little bit challenging.
This whole idea of we got this comprehensive zoning code, then we have this carved-out exception chapter here for plan developments with all these complicated criteria to apply. I mean, does this sound like a?
I mean, they're challenging to administer. I think most jurisdictions have some kind of PRD, Plan Development, PDD, you know, they call them different things. I do think they're good tools for certain projects, but the concerns I heard tonight, I've seen it. I've seen abuses, people come in with nonsense projects that they try to say is something special to get extra development rights and it turns out to be a lot of headbutting. I haven't seen a lot of that here yet, but I'm sure it'll come. So it's tricky. It's double-edged sword.
And I guess I would add to that, that we drafted this chapter acting on the direction from the council, which was to keep it in as a tool, to eliminate the minimum lot size, but still to limit potential abuses and to make sure that the plan development, if applied to a property, provides a benefit to Capitola. So we were sort of operating within that, those marching orders. And I think we sort of crafted the findings in a way that we thought would help limit abuses of this tool and make it something that could work well.
Well, I think you did a good job. I just think it was a task that you shouldn't have been put to. I mean, imagine if our internal revenue code read like that. You know, you can have deductions here if you provide substantial public, dah dah dah. I mean, it's just not the way a code should read, in my opinion. It's too loosey-goosey. It's too discretionary. It's soft, what we call, as opposed to hard, you know.
Yeah, you know, it's, I agree, because when, like for job creation, new or expanded businesses that increase the supply of jobs available to Capitola residents of all income level, is that you're going to provide one new job or are you going to provide 10 new jobs? I mean, what are you doing there? You know, public.
You have to provide one for the very high income, too.
That's right.
Transportation options, are we talking valet services or are we talking shovel service or what's a transportation option?
Well, that's where you leave it loose so that they can bring forth a good.
With changing, yeah, with changing technology and, yeah. One of the things I would love to put under transportation option is such as, you know, electric car charging, which I think would be a good benefit that if a plan development put that in, that seems like it's a benefit.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is still there's concern about the minimum and, but we'll put a half, we'll put a half acre in.
Suggestion and then if they take it out, they take it out.
See if it flies.
Right.
Okay.
That's all we can do.
And also there was discussion on the two steps included in a PD and not having vested rights when you leave that first step. Is that something you'd like to continue discussing? Is that something you'd like to continue discussing tonight?
I think that, you know, Ed has a good point. I think it would be better if it was a more normal process.
Just an idea, what about if, instead of a preliminary development plan, if we said they had to go to a conceptual review, something really high-level, relatively inexpensive?
Times, that's a simple thing, accomplishes what you're...
Right.
And it doesn't give you the sense, everyone knows that this is just a...
Conceptual review, right. That's a good suggestion.
Keep in the part about finding a job for hedge fund managers.
And so, other than calling the preliminary development plan a conceptual plan or conceptual review, is there anything in terms of the application materials that would change?
You have to simplify it quite a bit and just make it that it's, you know, it's a hearing for conceptual review and not make it look like it's a serious application approval.
When you say conceptual review, it's what others might call a study session?
Well, we have a process for conceptual review in the zoning ordinance, so they would just use that same conceptual review process, and it doesn't give any indication that it's any kind of approval, it's just...
Didn't we leave in the...
I don't think there's any process in the existing code about a conceptual review. It's been something we practiced for a long time, and, you know, we take in bubble diagrams and some bullet points of what a project wants to achieve, and we'll present it to you, or, you know, parking studies or whatever else they want to give us to take a look at, and we'll float it up the chain and see how it goes.
But it's, it is kind of expected that after you do that, then you go through the other process.
Right. Yeah, it's clear there's no guarantees with it.
But this one, it's gonna go to the city council first.
It comes to planning first, and then it goes to the council, and then it comes back, right?
That would be the way I would structure it. I mean, the planning commission should be the recommending body, so they should see it.
Where are you seeing that, Susan?
Okay, under seventeen thirty-six oh six oh, this section requires city council approval of a preliminary development plan. Am I missing where it comes to the... Well, it's following recommendation from the planning commission, so you're right.
Okay.
So my understanding of what Commissioner Newman is suggesting is that the first step be almost sort of informational, non-binding input feedback. The applicant presents the project, the planning commission provides feedback that's not binding, doesn't make any kind of decision, doesn't make an official recommendation to the city council, and then the city council would do a similar type of conceptual review, study session, at which point there would then be the formal process to consider and take action on the application.
A good example of exactly how that happened was the hotel up on the top of the hill here. A developer came in several years ago with a plan to change that to some sort of residential, large residential project, and he came, before he got far into it and spent a lot of money on plans, he came in to get input and realized that it was not gonna fly. And that was the end of it.
I think we just did an inquiry, right? And he came in for conceptual, he'd been in with the city council, and got their input, and...
The only thing that should be done out of public hearing, and it should be publicly noticed, like everything else is publicly noticed?
So I kinda, maybe, so I've been thinking about this, because I kinda just gave up and said, hey, this is what the city council wants. I didn't put a lot of thought into it, to be honest with you. But, you know, like, this is a city facility that's along the railway right there by the depot inn.
Right.
So let's say that, I don't know how big that property is, but let's just say they make that this new trail path that's gonna go from here to Monterey, and maybe they wanna do some type of, I don't know, they have an idea of what they wanna build there that's not a, it's not gonna be a city facility, but it's gonna be something that is, who knows? I don't know. I'm trying to think outside the box of where this...
But that property is own public...
It's a public facility.
It's public facilities. It's, it wouldn't come in as a planned development, really, anyway.
Wouldn't meet our half acre minimum either.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you have a half acre minimum, then you would tie your hands, but it wouldn't fit, maybe it's something that doesn't fit in, so they wanna make it a planned development. I don't...
But now it's gonna be a public, now it's gonna be a government thing.
Maybe, I don't know. I'm trying to think where we'd use this, outside the...
So how would it come in, Susan?
If it... Well, that property is publicly owned, that little parcel that you're talking about, that people talked about...
Right, but you may wanna go outside the zoning.
So you're not gonna put something private there, whatever goes there, you know, it's like gonna go on public property.
So let's say that the county regional transportation commission decides to put housing, you know, low-income housing along their new corridor, their new biking and whatever corridor, and they come in with a proposal for this public property, is this kind of where you're going?
No, I'm thinking something that's not necessarily housing, but it'd be something that's not, so maybe the city wants to do an exchange for part, or maybe they just wanna sell it, someone's got a great idea that they wanna use that part of the, because I'm trying to think where would...
Well, the property'd have to be rezoned if it's public property and it's gonna be a private development, anyway, right?
Yeah, I don't know. I would assume so. I guess it would be rezoned, or...
It would have to be rezoned to fit into zoning.
I don't know.
You don't like the half acre minimum?
I'm fine with it. I kinda just left the city council wants to do their thing, and I kinda, I kinda have given up on it, to be honest with you. I hate to say that, but...
So are we seeing on section D, the planning commission review and recommendation are gonna change that so that it reflects the concept review? And so, the planning commission would then recommend to city council comments on the concept?
Yeah, like we do, like we did on the mercantile.
Yeah, that's another good example.
And I could, I could go with the half acre myself. I don't have an issue, and that's not an issue for me. I'm like you, I think a planned development's something that's, Irvine was the first planned commu, where, you know, you have these developments where you, we did lots of them in my ear, but this is something that's so small that it's like, it's, I understand where the concern is.
Dale has a puzzled look.
No, I just think we're beating this thing.
That's what I read on this.
Okay, so the recommendations I'm hearing is to add a conceptual review level instead of the first step that typically takes place, it'll go planning commission and then city council, and there'll also be an added half acre requirement for a half acre minimum. And it seems like there's support for the change in the language that has been proposed.
Yes, very good. The benefit, I...
And jobs for all income categories. Okay. Any, so I think we've discussed everything we were hoping to discuss within the PD. Is there any other items within PD before I move on to residential overlays?
No.
No, okay.
Much longer than I thought it would.
So, residential overlays, within the residential overlays exists the affordable housing overlay, also the vacation rental use overlay zone, and visit village residential overlays. There was a discussion request within the affordable housing overlay to discuss a couple items that go beyond the zoning requirements. So typically, within your affordable housing overlay, you're, you have less stringent standards. There was, Commissioner Westman brought up that within the pedestrian orientation standards, and also the open space standards seem to go beyond what's required within, for the minimum. So, the minimum design standards for the affordable housing overlay, this would be a multifamily project, requires that the front facade is articulated with architectural details, that there is a defined front porch entrance with either a porch roof overhang or similar feature, also that the garage carport accessory structure is fifteen feet behind the front facade, that there are sidewalks along the street, and that the perimeter landscape and trees is preserved. So that standard is not included within our multifamily zoning district right now, these design standards, so this is in addition to. So, within the discussion, the options are to keep it as it's drafted today, we could remove these standards, or the other avenue would be to add these types of standards to our multifamily district, just to make it even, but...
It just seemed to me they ought to be equal. I mean, we can add them to the multifamily, or then, or take them out from the affordable housing, but it seems like you shouldn't, and affordable housing's something we're trying to encourage, why do we have more standards for it than...
Yeah, and I should state that this is how our existing code is set up, and there was also within this chapter, one of the pointing fingers that notes that there was a second-story setback that was much, it was like fifty feet from the property line for the second story, that was much higher than any multi, the multifamily setback. So in that, we noted that that was removed to not be an increased standard, but...
My concern would be that you'd only end up with Forty-Ninth Avenue everywhere, those apartments with the garages out front and that whole area that...
So keep in mind, this overlay district is only Six Hundred Park, and I believe the quality in site up on Bay. Manitgottically, I've heard that some of those standards and restrictions were purposely put into the code to make it challenging, so...
And because the affordable housing overlay zone in the current code was adopted not too long ago, we were reluctant to make too many dramatic changes to that content without specific direction from the planning commissioner or the city council.
I just, you know, any affordable housing project that's gonna come in is gonna go through the same design review as any other multifamily project. You know, it seems to me that, you know, we're saying that every affordable housing project has to have, you know, porch or roof, I didn't get why we were doing this.
I read it and was fine with taking it out. I wouldn't take it and put it over to the multifamily, though, because it's pretty restrictive. I would just take it out.
Yeah, I agree.
I would just take it out.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Is there a general direction to take it out?
And can we just make sure we're clear on exactly what we're taking out?
The minimum design standards, which is seventeen forty...
Section I, the entirety of section I?
The entirety of section I.
Subsection I. On page forty-four.
You say there are only two parcels that are in the district?
Yes.
And one's on Park, I know that one. What's the other one?
Behind the post office.
Oh, no, that's the one I was talking about. Because B says the AH overlay zone may be applied to parcels that are one acre or more.
I three. So my understanding from this was that the section to be removed is only the pedestrian orientation section. That was the request was to discuss that. If you wanna look in your draft code, go to page forty-four to forty-five, there's design standards with purpose and applicability, I guess, if you can scroll back. And then there's neighborhood compatibility standards are also included. And then the pedestrian orientation, which I just went over.
I don't mind the neighborhood compatibility, I don't.
So within neighborhood compatibility, we're looking at design and development that is compatible and complementary to the existing potential development in the vicinity. Protection of the property from adverse surrounding influences, and shall protect surrounding areas from potential adverse influences from the property. That's probably one of the findings within any project, that there would be adverse impacts regardless. And the development shall promote privacy for residents in neighborhoods, security and passive solar heating and cooling throughout, and that the materials are, they blend within the neighborhood. So, a request to remove those as well?
No.
No.
Need to remove those for me.
Just the pedestrian...
Just the pedestrian. Okay, is that clear? Just, just section three.
I mean, neither one of those two projects are gonna be too pedestrian-oriented, anyway.
Well, I think the one on Park certainly could be. I mean, you know, it's, it's an area that's large enough that they could certainly have a situation where we end up in Forty-Ninth, with garages out front, no sidewalks, trashcans everywhere, and so, but I think there's some other checks and balances we may get to. For me, the pedestrian orientation at the end, it talks about that it can be waived, but an item F there, but I'm willing to do what the group wants to do. I don't know if it's ever gonna happen, but...
Well, you have pedestrian within the development and pedestrian outside the development, and what you're talking about is outside the development, maybe, and that there's gonna be the corridor right across the street from the Six Hundred Park.
Right, right.
Fairly soon. I mean, I would imagine those two things might happen around the same era, and that that is gonna be a huge pedestrian accessible to Six Hundred Park. It's gonna be great.
Well, that part is, but I'm thinking in the facility.
Right, within the facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that you have to weigh both of them.
Right. Just like we would if it was just a project coming in, it's gonna be a multifamily project.
But it just takes what guidelines form, I think, is, so...
When the quality, get back to when the quality in came in for conversion to residential use, one of the big issues on that was coastal zone, coastal-related use that should be preserved for, so this kinda, you know, conflicts with that. We're putting on affordable housing overlay after, I don't even know if that's a feasible change in use for that property, getting in the coastal zone.
I think that property's outside the coastal zone, quality in behind the post office?
Yeah, well, I know that's the reason, that was the main reason that the...
Roamer's not, I don't know.
Conversion to residential was turned out.
Yeah, I didn't think the coastal zone, I didn't think it was in the coastal zone.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it is.
Doesn't look like it is from this map.
Nope.
I just barely...
Anyway, the concept was that it should be visitor-serving at that time, but it doesn't hurt, I mean, that's our only, we only have two parcels that are affordable housing.
And those are in our housing element that just got adopted, so...
Yeah.
Okay. So, we've got clear direction to remove that section, the pedestrian orientation, and we'll now move on to the open space requirement, which is found on page forty-six. And this, again, was found to be more restrictive than the underlining zone. It's a little, it's, it's, so the affordable housing is on the left column. For common open space, there's a requirement of ten percent of the site, or seventy-five percent, or seventy-five square feet per dwelling unit, and it's whichever is the greater of the two, so you do the calculation and then figure out which one's greater. Second is, and then for private open space, there is no requirement within the affordable housing. For a multifamily, it's fifteen percent of the site is required to be common open space, and then the minimum horizontal dimension of fifteen feet is required. And then there's also a private open space requirement of forty-eight, forty-eight square feet for fifty percent of the units, with each of those open spaces has to have a minimum horizontal dimension of four feet. So they are different. The open space is a little bit less with the ten percent, but because there's also the requirement of seventy-five square feet per dwelling, it could be higher than what the multifamily is required, it just depends on the math and the project. So, the changes here is we could keep it at ten percent site, and then change the, just to create a minimum horizontal dimension that's a little bit less than the multifamily, rather than having the seventy-five square feet per dwelling unit and taking away the greater of the two. There's multiple options to get there, but right now, it's not conclusive that the affordable housing overlay would always be less than the multifamily due to that seventy-five square feet per dwelling and the greater of the two. square feet per dwelling and the greater of the two. So if you'd like to direct us to change that to ensure that it's less than multifamily, we can draft that into the code. Any discussion? Shoulders?
I think you're right. I mean, it depends on the, I think these are all right, considering that each development is going to be so different. And I think they give us a good basis for making sure that there's enough open space. I think it's good.
Yeah. Just how it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll keep as is. Next, one of the, so in going through the vacation rental, there's, is there any more discussion actually on affordable housing that you'd like to have before we move on to vacation rentals? That section of code? No. Okay. The next, within these overlay zones are the vacation rentals. And as we went through the recent sweep of Capitola and looking at the conditions, we've come to realize that the language had to be clarified more when applicants come in and they need to know what are their requirements for the, as, after they've gotten their use permit, what happens after that every year with their business license and then the taxes? So we drafted, and I handed out a list of draft new conditions, and I'll provide it, Ben, this list too, so we can do the red lines in the updated code. But it just gives a little more clarity to the process. So initially, there was a requirement that the building official would do an inspection. We've decided, we think we should take that out. It's an added requirement that hasn't had to take place, the building official, because we are a smaller staff and.
Right.
He typically goes out at any time there's a building permit, and he'll review a building at that time. But to add that to this process would be, it's not recommended. Also, as I suggested, we also clarified that for the transient occupation registration, so there's, when we're doing these permits, we're really tied to the finance department. And we'll issue the permit, but then there's a process that continues after it's gone through the planning permission process. Every year, they're required to have a business license and also to keep their transient occupancy tax registration current. So that's better defined within number two. And number three, that they need to do monthly reporting to the finance department. So again, we worked closely with finance on these conditions. These are conditions that we actually, as we were permitting our transient occupancy permits, this time around, we were utilizing so that people understand the processes they afford. The parking hasn't been defined in the past, so we define that there has to be a minimum of one parking space on the site, and that also that parking onsite or within Pacific Cove, as long as they have a permit for the Pacific Cove parking lot. And right now, the reason why we put one is because that is the number of parking permits that we do issue for.
Right.
The use at, within our city parking lot, so. Also is a requirement to designate a person who'll manage the property and that they'll have, will have that contact on file at all times. They can update that with us, so it's easy for us to reach out and be in touch with folks. There's a limit, number six is for one sign per home, and it's limited to one square foot. So that's the one, that has been in the code in the past, and that is what you see around town. The number seven is that the transient occupancy permit must be visible, but it also has to have a, the contact information of the responsible parties, so that way, when someone is visiting the home, they know who to contact as well. It also has to have a permit number associated with it. Number eight is something new to the code with the new online activity that's occurring, that if it is advertised on the internet, the first line of the posting must include the official permit number issued by the city. So that way, when we go in and we're doing these sweeps, the permit number has to be right there. We'll see that, and then we can look it up and make sure they're current. And it'll just gives us a better way of making sure that these are managed and everything online is official. And it's something that when people are getting into this and they're looking at other postings, they'll be aware that there, you know, everyone else has an official permit number. And then, of course, how to revoke a permit if they're not following the ordinance. So these are the drafted new conditions that we'd like to amend the code with, so.
They all look good to me. I'm wondering about number nine and whether it's a little bit too vague. So there's, let's just give a scenario. There's a neighbor who's ultra-sensitive next to a rental, and they call and complain all the time, and yet somebody else might not, or I could just see, what are the standards here? I mean, what has to happen for it to be revoked? And is it, is it quantifiable or, you know? It seems subjective in a way. I guess it has to be.
Yeah, I think those are good points. I think it's difficult. You know, typically, when we get those complaints, we do investigate and try to use our best judgment as to the veracity of the complaint, whether or not it's valid, or if somebody's maybe hypersensitive. But I don't know if there's really a way we can measure it necessarily.
Right. So you just have to say, last year, Mrs. Smith, you had three really bad complaints, and we're going to revoke your permit for the next year.
Right.
I would think it would be more likely Mrs. Smith didn't pay her transient, transient occupancy tax.
Those are easy ones.
Will one of the standards be, how many police calls there have been on a?
That would be something we'd look at, and oftentimes, we do get these types of noise or nuisance complaints. We tell them, call the police if it's after hours, so that they can go out, visit the incident, give us a report, let us know what happened. And they'll use their judgment to let us know if it's, if it was really a valid complaint or not. But there is a lot of subjectivity and discretion with those cases.
Does the, the staff really want that responsibility for revoking, or I mean, if there's a, you know, if one neighbor's unhappy, I mean, that's sort of the kind of thing that where people should have a chance to get heard in some way.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, we could change it. I'm comfortable with it, but we, I would have no problem changing it to say that it'd be reviewed by the planning commission.
Like our conditional use permits, so.
Yeah.
Or that revocation could be appealed to the planning commission, so that there'd be another, at least an appeal body.
Yeah.
And then can we add something to, maybe under C or B even, about penalties for renting vacation homes outside, what the, outside that vacation rental areas, the overlay area?
It's possible. I think we need to talk to the city attorney a little bit, because we do set our code enforcement limitations in chapter four of the municipal code. So I'd want to make sure they're consistent, we don't have conflicts. It's certainly doable, but we might have to change chapter four as well. My initial take on it was, let's see how this sweep goes, and if it's something where we find that the hundred-dollar-a-day fine is just inadequate to compel somebody to comply, then maybe we should take a look at our citation structure. So I guess my suggestion would be, kind of keep that on the back burner until we have problems that we need to address.
Yeah, it seems like we could put something simple in there, that, something simple as vacation rentals outside this area are not legal or.
Oh, we could certainly write that, sure.
Or something, it's just.
Sure.
I have one question. It's with the parking spaces onsite. The condos that are above Margaritaville, Stockton Bridge Grill down, they don't have any parking onsite at all, but I do believe that they're part of a parking permit program.
Right.
Would we not allow them to do vacation rentals in those units because they don't have parking onsite?
No, they can, because they have a parking permit, they could.
They have a parking permit for Pacific Cove parking lot.
Okay. The way I was reading this was, it seemed to be saying there was one parking site, one parking space onsite plus.
No, it says parking may be onsite or within the Pacific Cove parking lot.
Okay. Yeah, so it should be one parking space is required.
But the parking spaces in Pacific Cove are not maintained for exclusive use.
No, they're not. The permit just allows them to park in there.
So maybe we change that last statement somehow.
Yeah, we can do that.
That's the reason I was reading it the other way.
Oh. We can add to that, like.
The onsite.
The qualifier.
Yeah.
Yeah, the onsite. Any onsite parking, or the onsite parking space, when it exists. Okay. Any other feedback? Okay. So the coastal.
I think this is actually really good. I think this will help a lot.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question before we move off of here?
Sure.
The last sentence of number nine, after a permit is revoked, the permit holder may, should it be, may not reapply for a new permit for one year? Or he may reapply one year later, but he can't reapply within the first year? That's what you're trying to say, right?
One year after revocation.
Okay.
Yeah, one year after.
Or greater.
And we'll add a sentence to it.
Which is very.
That sounds strange.
Very subjective, right? Or greater. So in other words, they have, you know, they've done something really bad, and you say, I don't know, I just, to me, it, if it were me, I'd say, how are you going to, where's it written that now I get two years instead of one year?
If you change to, so may not reapply for one year or longer, that would cover that. I know, but it's still the same thing.
I think that's a good point. Maybe it's a one-year, and then they can reapply. We could always deny, you know, if we make certain findings, and they could appeal it.
And they could appeal it.
Mm-hmm. So we're removing the for a greater time period, and then we can deny it. Okay. Thank you. So next, the next chapter is chapter seventeen point four-four, coastal overlay zone. We're going to give you an overview on this on our, during our Thursday evening meeting. Just, we've been getting comments as recent as today from the coastal commission, so we thought it would be better to digest some more of that and make sure that our presentation includes more of the feedback that we're getting. So we are going to skip that tonight. And the last section that we have on the docket is the first section of the citywide standards. So we've officially made it to citywide standards almost. There's a couple of things we need to go back for, but, so section three of the citywide standards that apply to all zones. And the first section is height setbacks and floor area that we have on tonight's agenda. Within the height setbacks and floor area, the comments were limited, minor edits. I included a couple of images, just so that if there are questions of how height is measured, we could go over that. But is there anything in particular within this section of code that you'd like to discuss? No? So here is an image of height and how height will be measured. As whatever the zone height is, it'll be from assumed ground surface. So we'll look at the periphery of the building and where the assumed ground surface is and measure up from there. So if it's on a steep slope, it's always helpful to have a topo and then measure the roof from the topo. Setbacks, one of the newer terms within our new zoning code is the exterior side setback, which is referred to throughout the code. So here, you can see the exterior side setback is when you're on a corner lot, that side that is facing the street. But just a better image that our code lacks right now of just showing front, rear, and side, and where the setbacks are. But other than that, that's the last section. I was thinking, if you'd like, we can utilize this time and go back to neighborhood, to the mixed-use neighborhood, and look at those maps that I handed out tonight, and talk about minimum lot size, the width, and the depth. Would that be a good use of our time? So you can look at the, hand out the colored maps.
As I understood your original presentation, the main purpose of this is lot splits, possible lot splits?
Yeah, possible future subdivisions. And if we want to set, currently, the code does not have a minimum lot size, a minimum lot width, or a lot depth within the neighborhood commercial zone, which will become the mixed-use neighborhood zone. So last time we looked at this, we were saying, well, let's get, make a more informed decision and look at what is out there. So the first three pages of your packet, I'll go over, this first map shows parcel depth. And in the area that we're looking at is directly across the street from City Hall. It goes from the trestle and a few properties beyond Blue Gum Avenue. So you can see here that the average depth of these parcels is forty-three feet, and then the most common parcel depth is forty-three feet throughout this section.
It's second, it's our second page.
Oh, I'm sorry, second page. Okay. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not going to be able to access the whole document on the slideshow. I apologize. So let me find my maps. So page one shows the widths, and as you can see on the section of Capitola Avenue, the, the average parcel width is thirty-six feet. And the most common parcel width throughout these blocks is thirty feet. And then on page two, as I stated, the parcel depth is, the average is forty-three feet. And this is definitely a unique part of the whole mixed-use neighborhood, the substandard lots. The average parcel size on page three is, for this area, fourteen hundred square feet, fourteen twenty-nine. That, that shows how that area is different from the rest. As you go to page four, the Capitola, as you go up Capitola Avenue closer to Bay, the average parcel width is approximately sixty feet, and the most common parcel width is forty feet wide.
I asked what the lavender color is.
The lavender.
Well, it looks lavender on here.
I think it's the one-twenty-six or more.
Got it.
I'm going to switch back to the presentation to show our suggestion. And then, if you go to the next page, you can see the average parcel depth along Capitola Avenue north of Blue Gum is one hundred feet, and the most common depth that is found is also one hundred feet in this section. And then as you go, the parcel size, the average parcel size, because there are many lots that are much bigger, is six thousand and ninety-two square feet. So in considering a minimum lot size, you'd want to realize that there is a possibility of subdividing when you look at those lavender sites, which are.
Over twenty thousand.
Over twenty thousand, yeah.
So the lavender sites would meet our, so I wonder, based on this information, if we want to go back to the discussion that we had on planned development and use twenty thousand square feet rather than half an acre, because half an acre would be twenty-four. And it seems like there are a number of these parcels that are twenty, and so that would make some sense to use that, that number.
Twenty-one and a half. Twenty. Half an acre, twenty thousand's fine, but.
You know, they're pretty close, the numbers are pretty close. It's just that we have some basis for.
What I don't like about the way we're going about this is that it makes a lot of parcels non-conforming. And when our goal is to control subdivisions, lot splits, and would it be possible to say, instead of saying there's a minimum lot depth and width for lots in these areas, to say that you cannot divide lots smaller than such and such? In that way, I know we had this discussion before, and Rich doesn't think there's a big disadvantage to being non-conforming, but I do, because, you know, you may run into things where federal lenders or have requisition requirements, and I don't know.
Well, I, I thought we'd gotten to that point, and we were only going to have this for new subdivisions.
Is that what it is? I don't think so.
That was the direction we received, add a statement in the code saying that it would only apply to. it would only apply to subdivisions that legal lots are record, you know, it would not...
Subdivided, oh, that's, that's already what we're doing, then that's fine. It's not affecting existing lots.
Right.
But in response to your first question, I think you could take a more qualitative approach and say that, you know, any subdivision shall do a lotting study and determine, you know, the average lot size, and, you know, pick your distance, you know, a diameter, and that that's sort of your baseline. I've seen that done elsewhere.
I don't think in this particular zoning district, there are too many places that we want to see a subdivision. And if we come up with, you know, reasonable standards.
But it doesn't feel like with 3,200 square feet, 40 feet, and 80 feet, we're creating a lot of non-conforming, except in the Blue Gum and Riverview Avenue area.
Yeah.
And you said that those were exceptions to the setback standards. Where in here do we have the setback standards for?
So, let me get to there.
Yeah, we do.
So if you go to page 20-4 of the new code, you'll see within the development standards, what we're talking about is the site requirements up top. But when you go into your setback standards, under the rear setback, you'll see if there's notes one, two, and three.
Got it, okay.
And then for, note three is the planning commission may reduce front, side, and rear setbacks when a parcel is adjacent to a commercial along the side of rear property... Oh, I'm sorry, it's two. Sorry. The planning commission, note two is the planning commission may approve reduced front, side, and rear setback requirements for properties fronting Capitola Avenue north of the trestle up to and including 431 Capitola Avenue.
Okay.
So that, is that area, just kind of recognizing that it's different from...
Where does it say these development standards apply, only apply to new lots?
That was direction given at the last meeting, and we're going to...
But it hasn't come in yet.
It hasn't come in yet. Nope. So, that's where that is. And the reason for the 3,200 square feet and the 40 feet in width and the parcel depth of 80, 40 feet was consistent north of 431 Capitola Avenue as you go up. And it's also consistent as the average across Capitola Road. Capitola Avenue north is, the average is 100 feet in depth, but for Capitola Road, it was less, it was 80 feet. So that is why you see the suggestion to decrease the parcel depth to 80. So it was really trying to include, what is that, the standard that you see out there today? So, and to not create too many non-conformities. And then the other option is to remove it and keep, you know, as the old code was, not have a parcel width, width, depth, or area requirement. So from there, I'll look for a direction. Thanks.
I think this is great, this, you know, these sheets, because it really does sort of validate and gives us some basis for making our decisions.
So would you leave them in, or would you take them out?
Would I leave in those new standards? I would leave them in.
I'm thinking the same thing. That's the direction you're looking for, right?
Yeah, yeah. Would you like the new standards, the new standards?
Okay.
And we will get added in there to clarify, it's only for new subdivisions.
Okay. Now, if you like, we could jump into the additional discussion items that are in your list, but we've covered everything that I had noted in the staff report that we would cover this evening. And we can talk about the schedule, that's the next.
I could take another 20 minutes, 40 minutes. What's that?
I could take another 40 minutes.
Yeah. I think it'd be good to talk about the schedule. I did do as much studying as I probably for the next session.
Rich, can you pull up that attachment?
I'll take a minute.
So we have seven more meetings.
Yeah, so within, within our estimate, we have six additional meetings for, prior to the, going through all the different sections, and then bringing back a red line tracked version on the sixth meeting. And then it would go to city council. And then from there, we would have a planning commission recommendation during the seventh meeting, and you seeing all the red lines incorporated into the document. What we did in this tentative schedule is list tentative dates that could work for utilizing the council chambers on Monday and Thursday evenings. These are by no means, we'd like your direction on what we've put together this evening and what dates would work. Rich, would you like to add to the...
No, just to say that, you know, it's kind of our best guess. You know, we kind of looked at some of the chapters and tried to identify those that may require a little more discussion and not to overload one meeting with those. Some of that could change. Like, I thought we might have more discussion today on some of the citywide standards than we did. So it's our best guess. The dates are all tentative, there's kind of placeholders.
So the 16th of May, I'd like to propose changing it to the 19th of May. I can come on the 19th, but I can't come on the 16th.
And I, one thing I would add is...
You can't come on the 19th?
Well, I'm scheduled to be out of town.
We, we did expect to have a pretty full planning commission for the regular May agenda, I believe it's the 5th. It's actually looking relatively late, so we can put some zoning code stuff on that meeting, so that'll help.
And I, I may not be able to be here for the 16th, May 16th, but I don't want to hold it up. I'd just soon have you guys.
And Commissioner Smith, you also would not be available on the 16th?
I'm sorry, May 9th, I can't be with May 9th. I will be here for the 16th.
You will be?
I'll be here for the 16th, May 9th, I'm sorry.
And the ones that I would not be able to be here for are June 27th, which is, I mean, at that point, I think we're, we're pretty well there. So I don't mind missing that one. And May 23rd, I would not be able to make it. I'm going to be gone May 19th through the 30th.
So it looks like we're going to...
That's one I really would like, the sign permits and all that, I'd really like to... What about if we met a little bit early on the regular meeting, too? We just made it at 6 o'clock and had a, had a zoning code...
Where we did that?
...update from 6 to 7, and then continued it on after the regular agenda.
Yeah, we could do that.
We could also shuffle the deck a little bit here with the agenda items. We kind of did it in order, more or less, except for some of the coastal stuff. So if there are items that we want to make sure we have a full commission, we can try to agendize those accordingly.
Right, or that specific commissioners want to be here for specific talks. We could let you know which talks and when we're going to be gone. So what else do we need to do?
So in that respect, if there's a date, a date that you know you'll be out, and there's specific items that you'd like to discuss, if you could send me an email, I can make sure that those items are not discussed while you're there.
Other than that, we'll stay on track and...
Yeah, right now, we'll have... A meeting, of course, is Thursday, April 21st. We'll cover some items, May 5th. We'll start a special meeting early, do our regular business, resume zoning afterwards. Have I heard that May 9th is, is a good date, or is there some folks that have a conflict?
I won't be there, but that's okay. I'll send you an email, but I want to hear what the rest of the group thinks. Could we move the historic preservation to May 5th?
I, I think so. I think a lot of the May 9th items would get bumped up to May 5th.
Yeah. I just think that's one that, I know I want to...
I mean, for the purposes of tonight, we can kind of live with the schedule as it is through May 5th, and we could all talk between now and Thursday, try to hone down some of those May dates and make a decision next, or this Thursday.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
Because May 9th, I'm booked to be out of town, but if I'm going to miss the 16th, I'd hate to miss two of them. So I'm going to go try and figure out a way to cancel it.
Before you cancel it, let's, let's talk offline, figure out scheduling a little better.
The non-conforming parcels uses and structures is something, and the incentives for community benefit, I'd really like to participate in those, too. If they bump to the 5th...
And realize you can always reach out if you want to add something as discussion items, too, as you're going through reviewing, so I can have a slide prepared for you. Okay. So with that, I guess the, the next meeting will continue the hearing to the 21st, and then we'll plan a meeting again on May 5th for the regular meeting. And then during our next meeting, we'll button down the schedule a little better.
So I have a question, and I already know the answer, I think, but what's the, what's the chances of, yeah, have the coastal commission come into the presentation of...
So they, we, we met with them, I want to say, three or four weeks ago, and they were open to coming and giving us a little presentation on...
Is that who you planned to come do the presentation, or is it you?
So I was intending to give you a little bit of an overview of what we've heard from coastal staff, some of the feedback we've received, both in writing and verbally, hopefully next meeting. And then having coastal commission staff come give you a presentation. There's going to be some key policy questions, from what I've seen so far, that we're going to ask you for some recommendations, move on to council. And some of that I might like to have before we even take a stab at trafficking the code. For instance, the, the setbacks from geologic hazards, you know, if it's, currently you have a 50-year setback, they've asked, most agencies give a minimum 100. They've indicated maybe they would accept 75, so things like that, big policy implications, and we're going to want some guidance on.
So they would be, they'll be here, that they're going to do the presentation?
Later on in the schedule, we got to coordinate, pin down a date, so it won't be the same night.
That you're doing your overview?
Yeah, we would like to hear your overview before we have them come.
So we can study?
So we can be prepared.
Yeah, so you at least know the issues from staff's perspective, what we think are some concerns and...
So they're, they're in the midst of rewriting their policies, or...
Well, not, not really. I mean, the coastal act, to my knowledge, has remained pretty much static since its inception. I mean, there's been some amendments from time to time, but it hasn't changed a lot. The way they administer the coastal act, I think, has evolved over the years. One of the key things they have done about 18 months ago or so, they adopted their sea level rise guidance, which is supposed to be guidance, not regulatory, but I, you know, it looks like it's starting to seep into...
Well, it sounds like if they're going to this 100-year setback, they're using that as a tool, so...
And it's problematic for Capitola.
Obviously, yeah. Great, director's report?
I don't have any report this evening, thank you.
Any more, do we have any other commissioner communications?
We have to continue.
So with that, I guess we'll continue this meeting till April 21st, Thursday.
Thank you.
6 o'clock, right?
Thanks, you guys are doing really good.
This is the second.
All those in favor?
All of us.
All those in favor?
I am. And the others are MIA. I don't know if they were left at the library after the birthday party, but I will hunt them down tomorrow, see where they are.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I need three. I just, I do, I do need one good one, and then two that are going to have sort of this size.